Had a chance and you'd like to speak, I just want to say please submit a public comment card here to our officer and he'll provide it up here during the public participation portion of the meeting. Counsel, if there's any approval or moving of the agenda as written, I do have a question on this because based on our experience last year, I remember working through the millage rate prior to the budget was sort of a difficult exercise. Is there any reason we could not swap these, assuming if counsel would even consider that, to talk about the budget first and then go into the millage rate? Is that, is there an issue with that?
I believe the millage has to be done first. I've never seen it done any other way. I think the millage has to be done first.
But you can have any discussion you want to have, though.
You could have a discussion.
Okay.
It's just, just don't open it up to, to the millage item.
The first order of business is public comment, and after that, we have the resolution on the tentative millage rate, which you can discuss anything you want during that resolution.
Understand, and that's typically what we'll do. We'll, okay.
Yeah, that's true. You could, during the millage thing, you're talking about the budget. That doesn't mean that you can't talk about the budget.
With our city attorney here, would you mind, if he could weigh in?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Mr. City Attorney Anthony.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you. You were right on time for a question.
Good. All right, I had a little kid can I have a traffic jam on up at night?
All good. Happy you're here safely. Thank you. We are, we just did the roll call and we are at the approval of agenda as written. If we want to change the order, my, my question was, could we take up the item number two prior to one? Could we swap those, change the order so that we talk about the budget first before the millage rate? Is there any?
The first, the statute requires the first action to be on the millage.
You got it.
So that, that has to occur. In, in the course of discussing the millage, of course, the budget is relevant, so you can incorporate the budget discussion into your millage discussion, but you have to, you have to go, you have to adopt millage first.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Yes. Okay. Well, with that being said, counsel, it sounds like not too much we can do with this anyways. Strangely enough, when we have two items, I think this is the first time I've wanted to move them around opposed to some of our longer meetings. Yes, Mayor Protim.
I just have a clarification. I just wanted to talk to the attorney. I just have a question. Okay. The things that were clarified, well, that were discussed at the last meeting, that the council did reach some consensus, do I understand correctly that we eliminate them from any discussion today? Since consensus was already reached on taking out all of those items, so I just was wondering if we can omit, speaking about those today.
Well, I think the consensus items were helpful to help staff present a tentative budget, right, for your consideration, but consensus items are not, you know, that's not a final action of the council, so I think you can still, still discuss them if necessary. But it's, but it probably has, at this juncture, significant impacts on the work product that staff's presenting to you tonight.
Based on, based on council's consensus in the last workshop, at the end of the workshop, the mayor and council had us go item for item through, so my deputy finance director could have a budget to present that showed those changes. Those, those changes to all those consensus items are reflected in the budget in front of you, so they've already been taken into effect. They've been moved or removed. So this, this budget, this budget is based on those consensus items because otherwise finance would have no place to go. We, we would not have changed the budget and we, and we're down to the 11th hour with the first.
I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to facilitate the discussion in lack of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counsel, any other comments, questions here? Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
A second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Kellum to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Protim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Public participation portion of the meeting is the time we've arrived. If, those of you who'd like to speak, again, please submit a, a comment card. I don't have any up here, and for those of you who are live streaming from home and would like to speak, we ask that you please raise your hand. I will recognize you. We'll go to the public here first, physically present, and then we'll go online. So please raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you here. Hopefully, you can hear me from home, and then I will unmute you and allow you to participate. And with that being said, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand because seeing none, we'll go ahead and close it. And online, I do not see any hands raised. But that, we'll go ahead and close the public participation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we've got public hearings, two of them, items one and two. The first is resolution number 202317. City attorney, city manager, adopting a tentative millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for the 2023-24.
Okay, first item is resolution 2023-17, a resolution of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting a tentative millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2023-2024 on all taxable property located within the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date. The aggregate millage for all city operating purposes is proposed at 3.5716 mils, and that's broken down in a way that imposes a tentative millage of 3.5284 mil for general government millage and 0.0432 mils for the library-dependent special district. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, counsel, this is the first reading. Will we take this one up twice?
Resolution.
Resolution, just one reading. So after this, be able to lock in the millage rate, and we will do two readings of the budget, though, adopting those funds. Correct? So the final reading will follow this schedule?
Yes. The tentative millage is considered tonight and adopted tonight, and then, of course, the adoption of the final millage would be another public hearing that the council will be having at a later date. And the budget is considered, tentative budget is considered tonight, and then final budget is considered at the next public hearing.
Great. Thank you.
Two times for each.
This is the first of two times for, for both of our items tonight. This first one, the resolution, counsel, any questions, comments? If we choose to expand into the budget, I think when we get to the budget item, we might have a lot of that already accomplished. That's one of the benefits, I guess. But at any rate, please, anyone like to ask staff a question or comment? Floor's open.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Kellum?
First, I'd like to thank you guys for working hard on this budget and for our workshop, which we really accomplished a lot there. My only question is, we, we really didn't have consensus, in my understanding, for the 3.5716. And you guys made this adjustment to the budget. Is there, like, if we went middle of the road, 3.41, in this other paper, you said how it affected, but do the cuts that we made make a difference in the general fund? We'll have a deficit, CRA fund will have. If we went with middle of the road, what would that, how would that affect those areas?
Well, the, what I hold in front of me is, is a little bit above middle of the road, but based on the consensus cuts that were, you suggested in workshop three, that would take the millage from 3.5716, the total millage, down to 3.5064. It might come down a little bit more than that, but that, if that was to happen, based on what counsel, if counsel went ahead and decided that the things that they moved and removed from the, the meeting, the workshop meeting, as you can see on the, there's a memo I had given you, what that did is it took the, and I'm going to, I'm going to round off here for, for the sake of talking, it increased the general fund contingency from 200K up to 320K. So if counsel was to go ahead and reverse and say, well, that increased the contingency, but hey, John, if we want to remove that to lower the millage, what would the millage be? And then the millage would go from 3.5716 to 3.5064. Middle of the road would prob, let's see.
3.5.
The middle, yeah, the middle, the middle, the middle of a road, the road would further take the contingency down below 200K, and, you know, would be, I know the last one we gave was like 3.4117, which would reduce it by 285K, so I'm just going to go ahead and estimate is, that could be very dangerous, could be, that, that would take your contingency down potentially to 105K. So I don't, that, that's the answer to your question, counsel. So that, that gets you, and that's an extremely low.
Right.
Risky.
And that's even with the cuts that we made?
Right. Well, with the cuts you made, if you just went with the cuts you made, you'd stay at about a 200K, and then your millage rate together with library in general would be 3.5064.
With, with the library?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. You know, on our, in our regular meeting, I had brought in up a, an agenda item that we never got to about hiring another person for the community center, so we could be open on Sundays, so the splash pad could be open on Sundays. With the cuts that we made, if we added that person, would that, I mean, I hate to decide on the budget and the millage rate and then bring that agenda item back, and we don't have the money to do that, and I think that's really something important. How would we?
Well, if that got you down to 200K by removing, by reducing the millage based on the cuts you made, and now you're going to add back a, a full-time employee, and I don't know what, what that full-time employee may be, but let's just say the, the full-time employee is $20 an hour, okay, with benefits. So you're talking about $40,000, and then you're talking about, maybe, you're talking about maybe bringing, incurring about, let's just say for discussion, about $52,000 more. So that $52,000 is going to further reduce this contingency. Now, you're at 200K, now you're going to go down to 148K contingency. So, you know, every time you add something back now, it's going to further reduce your contingency because it's going in the personnel costs. So that's the answer.
Okay. That's all I got for right now. Thank you.
Yes. Mayor Protim?
Rather than hiring someone part-time to do the splash pad, if we really think about this and think, people are not going to bring their children to the splash pad 20, you know, all around the clock, number one. Number two, if we advertise that it's only open maybe three or four hours on a hot Sunday afternoon, for example, and maybe it doesn't need to be open every single Sunday at that time, perhaps because of the floors that need to be cleaned, maybe two Sundays. So I think that we can come up with some type of a compromise on this, plus the fact that I don't think that we want the splash pad open around, you know, the entire year. When it's cold out, I don't think that people are going to have their children playing on the splash pad, and I really don't even know what the hours are right now. I went by today, this afternoon, and it was not operating, so I'm not sure what the exact hours are. But I'm just saying, I think we can come up with a program that could satisfy our residents and also satisfy our budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Willis?
One of, one of the things that concerns me is that we've already had multiple instances over the past few months of the AC going out in the building. So we need to consider that that could very well happen in the coming year, and to not have a contingency that could hold on and pay for that could be another issue. We also have discussed within the CRA, being able to help fund businesses or individuals with grants or what, whatever, for any improvements, and that's going to require us to have a nice CRA fund for that. So we've got to be careful in what we're doing here as far as cuts because of what we won't expect to happen. And I'd spoken with John this week about getting to a 3.46 millage for the general, for the general government millage, and he just explained the 3.506, and that seems to be a reasonable area to go to that still keeps us in the, the black, if you will, for any unexpected expenses that might pop up over the year.
Can you? Three point?
It would be, based on what you were saying, Councilmember Willis, you'd be looking at a 3.5064 combined millage rate.
With the cuts?
Yes.
That's with the library?
It's, that includes the library.
That includes the library. And that's basically what the, during the workshop, what the three council members had a consensus on when they removed 149,000 or whatever of projects of cost from the general fund.
And what would the contingency be at, at that 3.5064?
About 200K.
Thank you.
Which is, which would be the lowest contingency I've seen since I've been the finance director the last 11 years.
Essentially, the, the workshop, the third workshop that we had, brought in those cuts that are part of the memo that John's referenced, and John and I put this memo out, and I said, we'd like these, these cuts to go into the contingency to further strengthen the contingency. And I think what Councilmember Willis is suggesting is, is rather than, than do that, let's use it to justify a millage reduction to 3.5064. Is that fair to say, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis, anything else at this time?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
I'm fine.
So that is a combined 3.5064 for both?
Yes, sir.
And that represents if we sustain the, the cuts? I know we just said that, just being clear. Okay. The current rate, 3 point, what would that, the current rate is 9.45%. So I'm on page one of the resolution, the next page.
Right.
That we're adopting, section one.
Right.
The last sentence of section one. That represents an increase of 9.45%. What would this be?
Just in terms of percentage?
Yes, above the rollback rate if the 3.5064.
Let me, let me, give me a second to figure that out because that, I'm going to look at the formula here and do that, okay? Because that's an aggregate rate?
Take, yes.
If you'd like to discuss something else while I do that, that's fine, but I'll, I can figure that out for you.
Well, I think we would have to know that to, to amend the resolution, too.
Right. What'll be reflected on it? Okay. Listen to that.
All right. I saw that the one thing that you were going to keep was the appreciation dinner for the advisory boards, which I think is very important. However, the more I thought about that, the more I thought about the nicest things that I thought were done in the past, because my husband spent about 12 years on Board of Adjustments and Culture and Leisure Board, and I was on the Board of Appreciation, or Appearance, excuse me, yeah, talking about appreciation. And I really think a picnic atmosphere and even a potluck, I mean, we talk about small-town atmosphere. We talk about that all the time. Why should we spend $7,500 on an appreciation dinner when we could have a small-town potluck? And I think that people will be just as happy with that. People don't actually go necessarily to eat at an appreciation dinner. They go to talk to one another and be with one another. So I would be in favor of reducing that $7,500. I don't think that it does a whole lot, but nevertheless, I would be in favor of reducing that. I think it's important to say thank you, and I'll tell you, I even appreciated the, the appreciation awards that we received one year in different colors, and Doug and I have them up above our office, you know, in our office, and I think they're very important to show that, you know, you really are into community service.
Thank you.
That percentage, mayor, would go from 9.45% down to 7.46%. So that would be reflected in the next resolution.
So the rate of 3.5064 would be reduced from the current rate, proposed rate, but it, and it would result in a 7.46% increase over the rollback rate?
Right.
Okay. So my hope is that we can, and that's 100,000 roughly, 100, give or take? Well, it's just the totality of those cut, or the total.
Yeah. What's, 117.
7.
7.
Last year's ad valorem that came in total off, the total amount of ad valorem that came in, I guess we could go, the best place to go get that would be on the general revenue page, the actual, no, no, this, the summary.
Page, or page 78.
That's the better page. Thank you. Page 78, so, yes, thank you. That was last year's rate, okay? And then, so that rollback rate is lower than that. It's 3.2631. But, but last year, we increased, the change in revenues was 7.25% higher than last year. But we don't know the percentage above that year's rollback rate anywhere. I would imagine it's a little bit less.
Are you suggesting we go to rollback?
I would like to, I would like to go, ideally.
I will be against that.
Thank you. That's understood.
I thought that we just, I thought that our finance director just said that if we were to do that, reduce anymore, we wouldn't have enough money in the contingency fund.
Right.
And if the air conditioner goes out, we're going to have to wear our sleeveless tank tops here.
If you go, if you go as low as that, you're not only wiping out contingency, you're going to have to remove something from the budget.
I'm not scared of that. I, for this year.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, yeah, that's your decision.
Obviously. I'm for keeping the contingency as healthy as you think it is to address the air conditioning. 100%. You need R and R. You need contingency for the unexpected. Keep that there. I know we're using contingency shrinking. Keep contingency and go out and find the other things would be my hope. I think it's, to, to support, the question I'm, I'm looking at on page 78, the one we're looking at, is roughly 1 point, I'm sorry, 5.5 million, 5,776, or 5,576,782 dollars roughly came in last year in revenue from, from ad valorem taxes. That's, we'll never, that's the highest number we've seen, and that number doesn't always increase. We see, it does go down sometimes. And so this year, we need almost a million more than 900,000. So is it correct to say that if we go to rollback rate, would we have to reduce 900,000? I mean, we've already reduced 100,000. So would the exercise require finding another 800,000 roughly in projects to delay to next year?
That's a good.
Is that the number?
That's a good assertion that if you go to rollback, you, you will have, yes, you would have to cut probably 500,000 to 600,000 dollars. I mean, I don't have that computation. I could tell you right off the top of my head, that's what you have to, but you're on the right track. You would have to make significant cuts in this budget to get to where you want to be.
So if we pulled 500,000 out of 6.4 million, that's under, less than 10%. That would be my hope. I hear, and understand that that may not be the council's desire.
I would, I mean, I appreciate your, where you're going, but if we could kind of get an idea, because if we're not going to go to rollback, we don't need to spend, or if several of us are not for rollback, we don't need to spend time debating rollback. I'm against rollback, so that's just something to save time. If we're against it, there's enough of us.
I'm definitely, I'm definitely against rollback.
So there's no need to discuss it if there's enough of us that are against it.
It's just, you've already had three workshops, and you haven't come up with that dollar
figure, and I don't think that you're going to find it here in this budget, besides the fact that that is not the normal way of doing a budget. A budget, you go by item, 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 that things that are needed, that's, the different staff members work on this all year, and they propose these items that are necessary for their exact departments. That's how you build a budget.
Do you think I don't know that? Is that?
We're not insinuating anything. We're just saying, I'm, I'm against rollback, so if there's.
I understand, and you're one council member.
But I'm saying, if there's enough of us, then we, there's no need to discuss.
Where there's three, a lot can happen, absolutely. We could end this meeting with three. I understand how the power of the council works, so, and I think I've been brief in, as a matter of chairing the meeting, if we're going to spend time when I asked for the, the change, I think a significant thing that we need to know is what the percentage will change in the resolution that we're about to take up. You know, talking about cutting an appreciation dinner for $1,500 is not something that I'm looking at. I'm looking at, I'd like to finish in trying to do this as civil and as expeditiously as possible, but my desire is, I think, representative of the citizens of Cape Canaveral, is that we do, we, I am not going to normalize that you do need to just increase taxes every single year. We have a large amount of grant funding. We have debt service that we've taken on. We need to stick to that, obviously, but when that debt service starts to fall off, as John has pointed out in the past, we are going to see the benefits of cutting today. And I'm saying, we should strive to get. And I'm saying, we should strive to get, we can increase total revenues. I'm looking at the ad valorem portion of our total revenues, to work off of 5.5, 5.6 million dollars this year, this city staff could put together a 5.6 million dollar plan that works handsomely for this city and provides excellent community service. The fact that we're saying this is a huge cut is not at all. We're looking at 6.4 million, and so my hope is that we don't take 100,000, the 100,000's excellent, but we can continue to move towards that. I'm sharing where I am, I accept that there may not be a will or appetite to go that low, and that's all I wanted to say on it. And so I would say that there are projects that I can identify right now that I think we should consider reducing, and keep the contingency the same, that's fine. The Presidential Streets Master Plan is one that is roughly, how much is that per year? Is that?
It's in the CRA.
Okay.
It's in the CRA, yeah.
Todd, so our discussion on that, that wouldn't be a viable?
No, we talked about that earlier as, as an example of the type of thing, if you want to just take a big, big, big project and just delay it a year like that, obviously that one's in the CRA, so that's not a good example for that. But we're moving forward with the Presidential Streets Master Plan, just as council-directed, just like all these other projects are just as council-directed. But that was, that was what we discussed, was, I mean, how you could move a big chunk of money back a year like that. Not that I'm recommending that, but that's an example of something that would do something like that.
And remember, when you reduce the, when you reduce the avalorem, right, it's less, less revenue there, it also is going to impact the CRA, and how much money goes to CRA.
Understood. So my statement, and yeah, absolutely, the, is, I do not want to support a tax increase today, that's what this resolution with the cut, this is a tax increase, and I think we have enough revenue in other areas, our funds do very well, we have the CRA, we've got, like I said, great grants already funded this year. This is the year we should be, run off last year's expenses, and we will be rewarded for that in the future. So that's it, that's all I wanted to say.
All right. I just want to point out.
Yes.
Since we've been on the council, Mayor, since 2017, if you look at the chart there on page 78, we have reduced the millage rate every year.
That means nothing.
But I'm just saying that we have, though.
That's the millage rate, what does that mean?
I know, but we have reduced it.
If that was the rollback rate reduced, that would be something to discuss, that means nothing.
But we have reduced the millage rate, but we haven't, but we haven't gone up on the millage rate.
But if we, I mean, of course, reducing the millage rate, but it's relative to the, you know, it's, it's all about the rollback rate to try and compare year over year. It is, this is what we spent time on talking in the last meeting, you can reduce the millage rate and actually increase taxes.
Of course, because that has to do with.
What this chart doesn't show is how much taxes increased over the year prior millage rate. If we looked at that, it would be, I think we, we, we keep saying we reduced the millage rate, and to me, the average citizen thinks that's good, and it is good, it's good to, but sometimes, depending on what the property values do, I mean, we showed the example here in this line item, you've reduced the millage rate, but it, because property values increased so much, it actually resulted in more taxes, and I'm trying to figure out how we can get closer to the rollback rate at or below with the 5.6 million dollars in cash that we think it would bring in to run the city's services. I don't think reducing the millage rate is something that, that we should be focused on, we should be focused on reduce, year over year, we should be focused on reducing the millage rate over the rollback rate, and that we're not doing, because the rollback rate's 3.2631 in this resolution. So can we go to 3.2631? That'd require $900,000 in cuts. We've already cut 100,000, 800,000 ago.
I don't know what they would be.
Yeah.
What would they be? What would those cuts be?
Well, the last time I took a random sample is the approach, and what we did is we narrowed in on the city park where the actual cuts were made, and Molly was absolutely helpful to help us work through those, CP1, I think it was, we've seen those changes reflected today. That was in one fund. That was in a park that had 250,000 to go and upgrade a playground. What, what page is that? That's one, if you get to it before me, CIP, I'm trying to get there, it is 124, page 124 in the CIP. So Councilmember Willis, here, the, the, last month's sheet had that 250,000 in this year's column, so we moved that out.
Right.
We kept this in. We, I would hope that we could go page by page, not us, but our city staff with the will of council, and say, you know what, this next page, we can't cut anything. Or you don't do a $15,000 fence, you say, can we do it for 10? Can we do, you know, electric access for seven, and, and try to pull it down? I would take the summary, and we can go down the line, and we can count through it, but page 82?
I think, aren't we a little?
I'm not going to go through, but just some of the big, the bigger items can be reduced. This is where we would need staff's help. We don't, I mean, without going in, for example, you could take beach crossover, well, now let me pick a higher one, so it's more, more meaningful. Could that be done for 200,000? The solar array, 180,000. That's, can that be done cheaper? I can't tell you that, yes, we can strike it, can that be done in a future year? Bike lane striping, 50,000, Councilmember Kellen went through and talked about other overlays. Can we reduce that, or do it next year? And go right down the line. Veterans Park, obviously way high, can we press and say, let's do that for, for 200,000 less? And it does take work, but that's one example of what.
Please say the word.
Because it, you, you change the scope of work, you, you, you put it out to bid, you, you do it just like we do in our houses, and we, we wait, we purchase things.
It's more expensive.
That's not always true, that everything always increases, of course, a lot of things do, but property values go down, property values go up.
Well, we found with, with the building that was done, City Hall, the Cape Center, Community Center, that the materials cost a lot more, and that necessarily, it costs more to build those buildings. We know that. And look, for example, in Cocoa Beach, their new City Hall is going to cost twice as much as our City Hall. So waiting and dragging your feet on things isn't necessarily saving money. And I think that our residents like what we've done, they enjoy our recreational activities, they are proud. When I talk to residents, they're telling me how happy they are, and people from all over Brevard County, when I go to Space Coast League, they're telling me how nice the city of Cape Canaveral looks, how we have done things that they wish that their cities could afford to do also. I think we've done this, and we've done it over the last several years. I'm just hoping that we can continue to move forward and not drag our feet on projects that we have proposed. We spent money on trying to design projects, but then when we drag our feet on it, it ends up costing more, or we want to add or take something away. Once that architectural design is done, and then that's what we should stick to, every time we make changes, that's when it starts costing more and more money. So I'm not in favor of the rollback either. I think that if we can reduce it some, I think that's a good idea, but rollback, that's out of the question at this point, that's just out of the question.
So Councilmember Willis, I mean, we can go to non-departmental, but as, so it's Councilmember Davis, I'm not going to go through. It would take some work, it would, and, and for, for me to go through every, I mean, I can see the line item, but I can't tell you whether 250,000, like we learned on the park project last time, it said fencing and lights, then we learned there was actually cameras in there and other things, and the justification is, you know, short and sweet sometimes. So, you know, I don't know the material list that these projects have, maybe we don't go with the higher-end door, but whatever it takes to figure out how to work off 5.4, 5.5 million dollars, which is what we operated on last year, is not, I think, a questionable task, and.
I think it is, and I think that our staff has already done this work, they have gone item by item, they have reviewed and re-reviewed and re-re-reviewed over and over again, and I know that this is the work that our staff has done, because I've sat down and talked to Jenny and John about this.
But I know staff has done that, but, okay, I think we've talked enough. What I'd like to do is talk to the citizens more about it, because I don't think they want a tax increase. I think, I don't need to reach out to a bunch of citizens to go, hey, do you want a 7.5% tax increase? This room would fill up. No, they don't want it. I'm trying to talk with you and say, I know staff has put together what they believe would meet the needs of their operations, to do their jobs as best they possibly can in addition to the request of council, in addition to, as Molly shared last time, which I love, some direct citizen engagement, it's all in there. But we make these decisions without the price. We go, yeah, that sounds good, that sounds good, and then when the price comes, it's like, we all want nice things from time to time until we realize the price. And so, yes, staff has got it to a point, and I think if we talk with the citizens, we can bring it down. The, the Community Center, I don't know what the final number was on that, I don't know if we've got it, I think it's a door, but I think it was four, five, six million.
6.1?
6.1 million dollars. I would have loved, and I was saying it back then, that was a lot of money, that all went into, right over the basketball courts and the expanded green field, but now we've got a $10,000 lights, 15,000, I would have loved to put eight, six million across the whole property, and that's what I was advocating, and today, we could not increase taxes, but that took a lot of resources, and today, we're learning operating cost is consuming a lot, too, a big concern three years ago that we talked about with O and M, and we're servicing the debt on that at one point, or whatever it is every single year. And so I'm saying, just hold on, we've got Veterans Park, we've got employee raises, we've got fully funded police, fire, protective services, infrastructure maintenance, there are some projects, I think, in non-departmental, cultural leisure parks, rec, infrastructure maintenance potentially, resiliency. I can't get into, you know, beyond those projects without having help from staff to work through, but if the will is not here, it's not a good use of our time. Are you willing to, if it existed, Councilmember Willis, are you willing to fine 900,000, or have you already been through these hoops, and you just don't think that's a wise move?
I just do not feel like we're going to be able to responsibly find 900,000.
You think it would be irresponsible to operate on 5.5 million dollars this year?
With, with the cost, with the cost increases that we're facing, and who, are we going to tell Oak Lane that we're not going to do their street? Are we going to tell, you know, who are we going to tell that we're not going to do the things that they've asked for? And we look back at last year, how much did we push out of last year's budget into this year, or into subsequent years? I mean, each year, we're pushing stuff back.
But we're doing the same amount of projects. I'm saying, maybe we don't do as many projects, and I think we do have to reduce, but that's okay.
I, I, I've looked through it, and I, I don't, I don't see a way to get to that number that you're asking for.
Well, we have one more final reading after this, I won't waste any more time on it, that was my hope, is that we can, we can get lower than 100,000 off of a 9.5% increase. We got it down to 7.46%, if the 3.5064, but it's still a 7.5% increase, I'm trying to get that to zero. And so I won't support it tonight for those reasons, and I do think we could make cuts. Some of them would sting, but it'd be the right move, in my opinion.
Are you ready for a motion?
If that's what council, I don't think we need to discuss anymore, and Councilmember Willis helped understand, he doesn't think.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You know, we talked about.
And I have a card to a public comment.
Trying to, you know, cut more, 900,000's a lot, but, you know, I'm willing to look at different ideas, but my question is, that, you know, let's go back to Veterans Park. The grant that we have that is doing the other end of Veterans Park is 525,000, and there's, it's beautiful what they're going to do. Did we, I mean, what if we just said to the construction guys, we're going to spend 500,000, that's all we're going to spend? I mean, the, the monuments there, that needs to be redone, but otherwise, it's just paths and, and plants, and they've done the other end for 525,000. We're taking 325,000 out of the general fund for this, and it needs to be done, you know, we've been working on this for years, but, you know, I just think 750,000 is a lot of money for that small portion, you know, I don't want to put it off anymore, but, you know, what are we asking for where they came up with 750,000?
Okay.
I mean, I just think that that is something that we could possibly say, okay, this is the budget we have to work with, what can we get for that, you know, rather than?
Every time the architectural plans change, that costs money.
Well, I'm not asking to change it, I'm asking them to, you know, just say, this is what we can afford, you know.
I, I believe we already have the cost, are the bids out on that?
We've already received all the bids, but the way, because it was bid the way that it, all our projects are bid, we'd basically be starting over from scratch to say, this company who won this bid is now going to be asked to build a completely different project than they bid on, and completely different than their competitors bid on. So we're required to start at the beginning and change the design to something less, and then rebid that whole thing.
Isn't that also how value engineering goes?
You were still in negotiations on the value engineering, we're still working on trying to, yes, we're trying to find savings there, but they're still in negotiations, and I, I'm very hopeful that we will have some there, that should help in our contingency.
But every time we make changes, it costs money, so that's something that maybe in the future, we need to think about as a council, that every time somebody wants to add or take something away or make a change, that costs money, that costs money, and it costs time. And when, when we do drag our feet, it's just going to end up costing more money, and that's why Veterans Park is costing more money right now, and that's okay. I say, go ahead, and let's do it. This is something that. This is something that our residents want, and residents ask me about it every day. When is it going to be complete? And I'm glad to hear that we are adding the space force, and that's necessary. Yes, go ahead, go ahead. Mayor, I think Kim wants to make the motion.
It doesn't matter.
Councilmember Kellum, did you?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. I do have a public comment, one that came in. I want to just make sure, actually, sorry, it's for item number two. Okay. If you want to speak now, you can, or we're going to get into the second item next. It's totally up to you. Absolutely. Now, if you want to come up, I assume you are Mr. Bob Hathaway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. If you don't mind, say your name and residence, Cape Canaveral.
I'm Hathaway, located at 7964 Havelin Court, by Farms. I want to talk about, Councilmember Kellum mentioned about the splash pad person, and where it would cost 40 to 52,000 to, as a projection, as a potential. An idea, put a keypad. You've got the splash pad fenced in. I go there with my granddaughter, and to try and say, it's only going to be open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from such time to such time, and you have a bad weather day on Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, and it's not there Tuesday or Thursday, you try to predict the future, and I think that's a challenge. You know, to go to the rec center, it costs $4 to go into the rec center as a resident, so maybe you look at a revenue opportunity there, you know. Then, you know, when you were saying, going through the budgets and everything, you know, page 38, you've got EV charging station upgrade, $120,000 this year, and I talked to Mayor Pro Tim Raymond at the Friday Fest, she said that it used to be $10,000 annual budget to have the free chargers out there. I know y'all passed the, you know, you said, hey, we're just going to get rid of them, but if you can spend $10,000 for one more year, not have to spend $120,000, I think there's some of that money towards your $900,000 delta.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Mr. Hathaway. Thank you very much. Okay, that was all the public comment cards I have, and I'll just, since we opened that up, the card came in, check online, I don't see any hands raised there, so. Go ahead, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how I need to make it. I was going to say, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily accept the 3.506 millage rate, and that includes the...
The library.
Pardon?
The library fund?
Yeah, the library fund.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's 3.506 floor.
I have...
I'm sorry, I thought that's what I said.
You ended at six, I think?
Oh, okay.
But I think that was the discussed 3.5, 3.0564?
Thank you.
3.506, 064.
Did you second it?
Yes.
Okay. I got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Okay. Any more discussion on this? So this is the... The rate to support the reductions within the memo that was provided.
Yes, as discussed, Mayor, that, I believe that motion was based on the cuts that came out of the third budget workshop.
That's what I...
$117,070 that staff had proposed would go back into contingency, but the discussion was, no, instead of that, take it out of the rollback rate, and that would represent a rollback rate of three point, I'm sorry, not rollback, put it in the reduced millage rate of 3.5064 combined millage rate. And I believe that's the motion.
That's what I didn't know if I needed to include.
Okay. Anything else, council? Good. Okay. Obviously, I don't support this, but that's my only comment. If there's not anything else, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
The motion to adopt the millage rate 3.0564 passes? Okay, I read the three point, I wrote down, maybe I said it wrong, excuse me. The motion... Todd, are you clear on that? You're good?
Yes, the motion that passed was 3.5064.
Yes, 3.2.
As a combined millage rate.
Okay. If we're good to go?
Yes. So just to clarify, and Anthony's correct, the, we're not changing the library-dependent special district millage rate of .0432. The change will happen in the general government millage to get to the combined 3.5064.
We're good?
Yep.
The way we, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, that's understood. All right, council, so now with that under, or about, we can move on to the budget. If there's anything to discuss... Because this is an ordinance item, I will ask our city attorney. This is ordinance number 092023.
Yes, Mayor, it's ordinance number 092023. An ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stonewater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue fund, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, ending September 30, 2024, providing for an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance, and serves as the consideration of the tentative budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Mayor.
Thank you very much. City manager, any comments here, or anything from our finance department that we need?
I don't, I can't think of anything, but we're happy to answer questions, sir.
Thank you, council. Any questions for city staff? Or amongst each other, for any comments? Floor is open. We spent some time in here, and I do want to take this time while we're kind of sorting through, and thank city staff for everything. I do think every year, we are getting better at the budget. We see it differently, we see things, little improvements. So we have come a long ways, but it's a lot, it's a lot of moving parts. There's, you know, new revenue streams, the disaster, the timing of the cash flows, and I know it's, it's a lot of work, so thank you very much.
It's also worth noting that the projects that come up at the annual strategic planning retreat are fewer and fewer each year as we go, which I think is in line with council's direction, so far to the point that we're not even going to have a strategic planning retreat next year, because that was just removed. We are going to have the CIP workshop in lieu of it, but, yeah, the, the big projects, I think are, a lot of them are really behind us or already approved.
Thank you. Council, anything on this? We got into the budget on the last one.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kellum?
I just have a question. On page 23, interest from investment went from 30,000 to 246,750, a 723% increase, and we figured out a way to spend that money. So my, you know, the, again, going back to hiring another person, Molly had brought, brought this to us, well, I talked to her and, and Todd about adding the person for the splash pad again, back to that. I like the idea of a keypad, that's a good idea, but we had also involved the Nancy Hansen Center, and opening that on the weekends for the bathroom, and more people playing pickleball or tennis, which would bring in more revenue. Maybe adding the Saturday, or the Sunday person at the splash pad would also bring in more revenue, because the inside would be open as well as the splash pad, which would bring in more revenue. I just, I'm hoping that we can find, for the residents, the money to hire that extra person, or in the, in the revenue somewhere, and maybe make a cut somewhere else. I think it's important, a lot of people talk to me about the rec center and how, you know, it should be open on the weekends, especially with the kids back in school now, they only have the weekends to go. You know, I think being open on Sundays is, is good, we wouldn't have to worry about adding a bathroom, you know. I think it's just a good thing, and I hope that we can find the money between now and the next hearing to add that in. I, again, like the keypad idea, but, you know, we're going to have the culture center, there'll be clientele or people going there, and, you know, maybe if we could have a whole day, people could spend, go to the splash pad, go to the culture center. I don't know, just my thoughts. I think it's really important to the residents. A lot of people are asking me about it, and it's, it's something good. If we have to raise taxes, we could open on Sundays. Thank you.
I just would like to put in about Nancy Hansen, since I'm over there on the tennis court, and I see, most of the time, when the people are playing pickleball or tennis, they're doing that in the early morning hours, especially in the summertime. Usually, when I go by, if I'm taking a bike ride, by 11 o'clock, it's empty, and that's, so, again, again, it's not necessary, when we think about opening Nancy Hansen or the rec center, to have it open all day. I mean, there could be set hours, and people can fashion their weekend and, you know, schedule their time around the hours that are set. So I'm just thinking of ways to, you know, it doesn't have to be 100%. Plus the fact that we can get the key if we need to use the bathroom if we're there, and there are people who can get that key if the bathroom, and I know that when the different people do yoga on Saturday morning, they have a key, and they open it, and then people can use the bathrooms.
Well, I, you know, Molly said, Molly, help me here. There was a, a demand for people wanting to be open on Sundays at the Nancy Hansen, and again, it's more people playing pickleball, it's more revenue coming in. It doesn't have to be open all day, you know, it could be certain hours, but I think it's an amenity for our residents that would be a good thing, and...
Sundays?
Sundays, yeah.
Limited, limited.
Yeah, not all day. I mean, we could start with certain hours and see where it falls, you know, the snowbirds are on their way back down here soon, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of pickleballers that will appreciate being open on Sundays to play.
And Saturdays.
And Saturdays, yes.
It's two days over at Nancy Hansen that we would have to account for, instead of just the warm like we have at the community center.
Right. So the, the person that we would hire would help with two days at Nancy Hansen and one day at the...
Well, they can't be in two places at once.
Well, I know, but I mean, you would have to...
We would have to rework the schedule.
So that's, that's what I'm...
And I personally would not recommend that the Nancy Hansen be open for a full day over the weekends.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think, you know, early morning hours would be...
Morning is typically the, the time slot that's most requested, most desired, most utilized for any, any of the facilities. People wake up in the morning, typically, people don't say, hey, I'm going to go work out at like 2:00.
Right, no, it's early morning. I agree, and the same with the splash pad, early morning, you know. I just think it's a really important amenity for our residents, and something we should really try to fund. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think, I mean, one of the big things for the community center is doing something for the kids. We heard that a lot, and when you look at a week, or just the demographics of Cape Canaveral, Saturday and Sunday are, I think if you had to pick the, the one day that, on average, most people are available to spend time with their families, or just to be off, all types diverse, it's more than likely on a Sunday. Now, some people work every Sunday, I'm not saying that, but on average, it's their, no school on Saturday, Sunday, and so having those days prioritized for the community, and, you know, how this gets worked out would be for our city staff to, to work on, but one thing to consider would be, maybe they're closed on a Monday, because to me, if you're prioritizing days, or whatever the day is, or hour or shift, open, it's, the, having it open for a half day on a Sunday is better than a whole day, maybe on a weekday, because of the access on a Sunday, and so...
And you analyze the hours that are used most, and go with that.
And I'm saying, you don't necessarily have to expand staff if you just give them another day off. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. The other thing that was brought up, and I have heard this in the community, too, is having it open, we've heard public comments, is volunteers, the willingness to, obviously, city staff behind the counters and stuff, or work like that. I love the keypad idea, I think that, you know, the self-serve and limited use is great ideas to, you know, do things more efficiently, more cost-effectively, but, you know, that, having a trained staff member in this role, but maybe there's a volunteer that shows up, we have competent, great retired people who want to help, and maybe they're the ones who put up the volleyball net, or run the dust mop up and down, and help out their community to be the eyes and the ears, and that's it. I wanted to echo, operationally, this budget supports it, or maybe we think of some creative ways, like we heard, to, to, to work with what we have and open it up on Sunday and Saturday.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, do we have, do we have any metrics on usage entrance to like the community center, or on any particular day? We would obviously want to utilize the most optimal times.
Staff has those metrics, and we would definitely be able to target that without necessarily council having to, to make it like an act of government. We can figure out when our best times are.
Okay, thank you.
So was your question, Councilmember Kellum, to make sure that this budget could support it, or if we vote? Because we didn't get to that agenda item, and just the time to get these things done operationally, I'm working with the administration. We, was your question answered?
Yes, I don't know how we would, I mean, this is the time to put it in the budget if we're going to do it. And I didn't want to wait till, you know, after the budget, and then have it be said that we can't afford it because it wasn't in the budget. When I had brought the item, and we ran out of time to bring it at the...
Well, if Veterans Park can come under. Well, that's how it happens, though, right? You get a, you get a break over on this project, and it helps you do those things, so...
I think Molly's suggestion is, is a good one, because hers doesn't sound like it would have a budgetary impact at all. Look at the usage metrics about, maybe shift them, shift some things around administratively, if I understood you correctly, Molly.
Usage on the, the days it is open?
At this time, hey, having the community center open for another day without taking away from some other day.
Right.
Because the problem with the splash pad is not necessarily the community center, it's the access to the bathrooms. They have to have bathrooms within 200 feet. We can't just put a keypad on the outside of the community center, because then the entire building would just be up. because then the entire building would just be up for grabs.
That's the whole thing of adding another person to be.
And have we pushed the envelope on the challenging the Little League, Beth?
I think the variance is what he's asking about.
The documentation has been submitted and we are waiting for their board to meet.
Okay, well, if this council can help with that, I don't know. That would, if that went our way, would that allow us to?
That'll check the box.
Meet the criteria?
Yes, if that, if that goes our way.
That would take care of the splash pad.
It would take care of the splash pad. It will not take care of people wanting to utilize the community center as it normally does. And it also doesn't address the usage for the Nancy Hansen, but that can come in time.
But it's valuable on its own.
Yes.
Oh, it's incredibly valuable.
Okay.
Good deal.
But it's hard to have a conversation about adding staff and adding accessibility to one particular park. You are talking about adding staff and adding accessibility and you're not considering the other audience that's also asking for accessibility to the facility of their choice, so.
But people are using the Nancy Hansen Center during the weekend.
For free.
For free, for free, that's right, for free. They're using it for tennis, it's, it, for tennis and pickleball. Just FYI.
Oh, I know, and it's a potential revenue.
But they're, they're also asking for restroom access, water fountain access, which is, as, as Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Raymond said, certain people have been given a key over time. I don't think that that's a normal thing that we do. Give keys away to anybody who asks them, it's very special.
But Saturday morning, Saturday morning, it's, they can, they can get into the restrooms on Saturday mornings.
So the data would cover the existing days. For which facility, Councilmember Willis, do you know what he was, is it for the, the Nancy Hansen or the commu, or both, the C5?
I think Molly has the data for both facilities.
And you would learn, learn about peak traffic times?
Which are the least utilized days? I mean, if we were going to have to, if, if we were in a position where we had to shut it down one day during the week, we certainly don't want to do it on a peak day.
Right.
Well, I think that would definitely be a non-government decision.
Right, right, but I'm just asking the question.
One of the ideas that was thrown out when we first started exploring this idea was, and this is looking at the, that morning attendance. Our Saturday afternoons are not as widely attended inside the building, but it's huge outside. So one of the things that we had discussed is, okay, well, we'll move staff around and we'll take staff, the afternoon shift, say, tentatively close on Saturdays around noon and then exchange the hours that we would be losing from Saturday and using those and open the community center on Sunday afternoons. Until we realized that that would create a problem for the people that are trying to utilize the splash pad on Saturday afternoons. Because that means the splash pad would then only be open in the morning because you have to have bathrooms within 200 feet.
So if this variance comes through, that fixes the problem with the splash pad?
Yes.
But it doesn't address Nancy Hansen or?
Or people that have asked for the community center to be available on Sundays for them to work out.
But as Councilmember Willis says, if the data says, for instance, that Tuesdays are always low attendance at the community center, you could just say, well, let's just staff the Nancy Hansen one of those weekend days and close the community center on Tuesdays.
Well, that's what I was saying, you know, it's four Sundays a month for the, the community center. Four Sundays, because it's already open on Saturday. So would there be a way to maneuver the staff to cover the four Sundays?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so we would have to hire someone else?
We are pressed in our current status. So adding to that would put us in jeopardy.
Okay, well, I think, like I said, I hope that we can find the funds to fund another person. I think it's good for the city. It's good to utilize, you know, and people that are playing for free would have to pay and that would be more revenue and I think it's a good idea, so.
Could be funded by EV charger proceeds. There's a new revenue center for us right there.
Yeah, I think opening up that weekend will be, you know, it's a shift of time, but in two different places with a, a finite amount of people, so. My comment would be if you just had to be open two days, I think it would be Saturday, Sunday. I could be wrong on that, but I really believe that. I think that we're leaving the two most important days off. Okay, well, we're working through it, thank you so much. And today, we'll keep it in front of us. All right, council, I forgot who asked that, want to make sure everyone's getting their questions asked or answered, excuse me. We can't let the formality get in the way of the efficiency, the only, thank you.
So to St. Andrew Morley's comment about the EV revenue, I noticed it's $72,000 in the budget for revenue expectations for this coming year after spending $120,000 to install these new chargers at Manatee Park, Manter River and City Hall, correct? Three locations in the city?
And Canaveral City Park.
Canaveral City Park, okay. So what was the basis of the revenue? Do you have that study that you could share? Because I know there's going to be a few of us who would look interested into that.
Yeah, Dave, you can forward the whole agenda item to him, it's got all the data in it.
All right, cool, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
I think it was meeting after last, it wasn't the last meeting, it was?
Overcharge meeting.
July.
July.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, how many EV drivers and you're not going to be a revenue there, so.
I'd love to get your input and weigh in on it and how, how that would impact you and thank you.
And, and the city council will be considering the, the rate structure fee resolution at the September 20th meeting. So they'll have. The, that's going to be discussed by council. And, and that agenda will be out next week, Mia.
I did some whole research on this.
So next Wednesday, that agenda item will go out a week before the council meeting.
Thank you.
The 20th, yeah, the 20th, the 19th is a workshop on the Civic Hub.
Thank you. And is there anything else? I mean, I'm not going to go through, but I mean, Councilmember Willis, another thing I was talking about was delaying some of the vehicle purchases or maybe looking at the types of vehicles we're getting and getting a different one. I know that there's some great tax credits and incentives in there. And, and the other side of this budget is, I think, very large amount. If all the, the, the funds come back of grants, how you're going to account for that, right? I mean, when you realize the revenue comes back, it will require us to expend it today, but it should look really good if we qualify those in next year on potential surplus of cash to, or to help with a contingency. That if those, I don't think you have the IRA, the induction, Inflation Reduction Act, the investment tax credit on the solar array, the EV charging stations, the 30% investment tax credit, depreciate, all the things that we qualify now. Those are going to be a revenue in a prospective date. I don't know if that's.
That's, that's correct. It, it's correct, whenever you have a, whenever you have a grant, a grant's going to support a project and that, that grant money's going to show up in your revenues and, and be part of the expense too. Yeah.
But I don't think that that grant, that this budget would or should even show that as grant funding coming in this year unless, because it's, it's a lot of money. And so my statement for that is, the hope is that if we expend that money this year on those projects, the battery storage backup, all those energy projects that helps us become more resilient, there was some flood, LID projects. That, those grants or reimbursements, the effect of those are uncertain. So if they do come in, we are going to see an excess in revenue because that revenue isn't showing up as grant revenue in this budget. Is it, right? That's tricky.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But it's a lot of money, so it matters this year, I think, more than ever.
I'm going to just turn to Dave here for, for a second. Go ahead, but, but I am, let me, let me just ask Dave, because it's, because it's, because it's. Yeah, okay, but let me, let me just, let me just say, say this though, is that, and Dave, it's, I know it's your area. And Jenny, I'll let you talk about it a second. Let me just get my point across, is that those, those, those monies that are in, in those particular, here's what I want to allude to. There are some projects, based on what you were saying about solar, I know where you were going with that.
The tax credit, direct payment.
Yes, that's the later on, that's the later on part, so go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay, that's the later on part, yeah, because you realize that later. It's realized later on, instead of just like, you know, we're going to do this project and now we just got $75,000 of the 125 it was going to cost. So yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure you were going that way within.
Exactly.
Yeah, the only income showing is the actual grant in this budget, is the grant, not the Inflation Reduction Act, which would come later.
Yeah, and I think that's new, it's all new, it's kind of, has the effect of the grant, but, but that'll be good because.
Yes, and Zach had said that, once we have our final numbers, then we can maybe apply for that grant for the number that we actually spent, so yes, we're.
Yeah, so if we spend $200,000, I think the BCSO solar array on the building we own that they occupy there, you know, 30%, it'd be $60,000 credit. Well, we put the $200,000 out, but for the first time ever, the city of Cape Canaveral, the Treasury Department would actually write a, a check because we don't have a tax liability, so we would have a revenue of $60,000 coming directly back into Cape Canaveral.
Yes.
For 2025, or 2024, 2025 budget though, right? That would be. If you added it all up, it was going back to Lexi's grants and Zach. I want to say it was maybe three or 400, maybe more.
I'm sorry.
Maybe a half a million dollars that could flow back into us.
Actually, the Inflation Reduction, as soon as I said that, I didn't agree with myself. We did put in the budget, the Inflation Reduction Act. I remember Zach and I talking about this now, for the solar array. Because the net of what, you know, we have an expense of $180,000. We think we're going to get a grant of $135,000, so that left $45,000. And we did put that in as Inflation Reduction Act grant for $45,000 for this year.
In the current proposed budget.
In the current proposed budget.
Can I look at that one? Is that in the CIP plan?
Well, it's, um.
It's, it's factored, you're saying?
Yes, it's under the general revenue, under the federal grant line.
Okay, it's inside that, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, I remember talking to him about it, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Okay, well, that messes with my head a little bit, but yeah, it's, it's weird.
But also for the vehicles too, we, that is not in this budget, so.
The vehicles are not?
The vehicles are not, so if we do buy.
Yeah, the flat tax.
We can get grant money for that.
What the mayor was asking, though, your first, the very first thing he said is that, does the money come back in the same year, at the end of that year, after we've done our solar array on the BCSO? That's basically, and, and what Jenny was explaining is that if you look under the federal grants, that money is contained in that number, that 956,000. So when you go through this budget and you start adding all that up, you're going to come up with 956,000.
Thank you.
It's, it gets a little confusing.
It's money out, coming back in, I think it's going to flow in maybe in the following year, but whatever. I, I, I think I'm good on that.
Mayor?
Yes.
When you're ready to get back to the agenda item, I just, I believe we're still under, sorry? We're still under public hearing portion of it, so we'll need to close that before we entertain a motion.
When the gentleman got up and spoke, that basically opened your conversation.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing item, so if anyone else would like to speak, please come forward, raise your hand. We acknowledge you and for those of you listening at home, if not, any, anyone else does not want to speak, we'll go ahead and close, double checking here. Seeing no hands raised, we will close the public hearing item. Thank you very much for reminding me, we had that still open. And bring it back here. I do not have any further comments. And I, you know, my, my request that as if staff between now and the final reading can see opportunities, that would be good. That's it. Any other comments, council? Yeah, and I think we went through, you know, kind of our thoughts and vision for the, the year upcoming. I do know there's a lot of great things in this budget. Just wish it was $900,000 less, so, thank you very much.
I move, then I move that we adopt ordinance number 092023.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second by Councilmember Davis. Yes, Councilmember Willis?
Do we, do we need to make note of the changes that were voted on on the other?
I think they put them in here as written.
They're already in.
The changes are in, are in, in the budget. They're talking about the, the removal, the move and remove of what they voted on. The consensus in the workshop, Jenny's already applied those in the budget.
I know, but they're, the contingency and we have to reduce.
Oh, oh, now, now as a result.
But it says ad valorem 3.516.
As a, obviously, as a result of the millage now, now we go back and we adjust accordingly and change all the pages that are affected. I, I thought you were talking about the, the, the other, the workshop items. No, you changed a millage, so now Jenny will go back and change all the, change, change the, change those.
Would it be appropriate then to amend the ordinance, a motion to approve the ordinance as revised by resolution 2317?
No, I think the, I mean, the, the, we voted on increased, or the, you know, the rate we voted on and I think by that vote, it represents the obvious need to change that.
Let me make a clarification, because typically we're not in these waters this late in the game. Typically, council comes in and the decision's made, maybe. So basically, Jenny's right, we are not going to redo this whole budget for the next meeting. What we're going to do is, if it means that I have to do a memo to you that says the, what you have done with the millage, what effect that had on the budget, you'll have that in front of you because if you ever change more in the budget, we've just created another, but we, we don't do, that's not efficient way to do business. So we, and we don't do it that way. Because then, when we do the budget after 20 September for you, you will have a bounded book that's final that you will get. So we usually are not in this stage at this point in game, but because of the dynamics of what's going on here, you will get a memo from me through the city manager that tells you what was affected based on this meeting. And it'll be accompanied. And it'll be accompanied, and you have your budget already, and then if we stay where we're at, Jenny will then update those items and you will have a new budget by the end of the month. That's it.
So the motion as stated works?
Yes.
Yes, oh yeah, they're approving the, they just approved the ordinance for the budget.
Okay, thank you, John.
Which already had the CIP items taken out, however, you didn't know the way the prior item number one vote would go for ad valorem rate, but with that vote, you know you'll need to now go in and?
Yes.
When it's time to bind the books?
Right, right.
Okay.
Right.
Councilmember Willis to that?
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a good point. Anything else? Motion second on the floor, we're good? Okay, I don't think we need to amend, we're good. Awesome, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellen?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, motion passes 3-2 for the budget, thank you all very much. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn, let's do it, by?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I mention one thing before you adjourn?
Well, I don't think that would be a problem at all, yes, please, come forth. Reports.
I know it can be diff, these are difficult times, and I, I have some good news I just wanted to share with the council, and these are budgetary concerns and issues, and it's just, it's nice to get a pat on the back sometimes as a council and as a city. As you know, we have several members of our staff that's up in, up in Jacksonville this week, making several presentations to a statewide organization. And I got a text from Zach this afternoon, late this afternoon, and I wanted to share it with the council. And it says, "First presentation is done, Dave. It went really well and great attendance. People here seem to be recognizing our name as a city and our efforts. I think our projects and our work are definitely permeating the planning municipal world across the state. Really cool to see and hear." So these projects that we're talking about, working on this today, we may not all agree with them, but, but as a whole, I think they're, it's sending messages out there, and it's, it's, it's nice to hear, you know, get a pat on the back sometimes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that, yes, very proud.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis?
After the July council meeting, presentation by Corrie Brewery, I took that presentation and submitted to Cocoa Beach Chamber of Commerce, Corrie Brewery as a nominee for Business Champion of the Month for August, and Corrie Brewery won. So I wanted to congratulate them on getting that. And we need to find more businesses in Cape Canaveral that are doing good things for the community and promote them, so, thank you.
The city manager and I were talking about, the, it was happy, see the BED Board, Business Economic Development Board, meet, and, you know, brainstorming about the next meeting, little items that they could consider and talk about, and I think they might be able to help us with that too and identify those. But thank you for sharing that, and it was an amazing accomplishment what they did, and thank you, and congrats, yes, to the Corrie Brewery. Anything else?
I just want to point out that Lisa did install these USB chargers for city council, there's several of them up here if you need to charge your phone. They're up there.
Thank you very much. Okay, any reports from city manager, city attorney? Councilmember Kellen?
Yes, I have a report. The city, along with American Legion and the VFW, is going to host the first inaugural Veterans Day Parade here in the city. So the council is all invited to ride in the car and wave or whatever, we're inviting. We have a lot of responses, no twos coming, Coast Guard. So it, it's, I'm excited about it being our first ever Veterans Day Parade on November 11th at 11:00. So, and it'll start at City Hall here and go down Orange Avenue to the VFW, where there'll be a community barbecue for everyone. Keep that in mind, pencil in the date, because you'll have to be in the parade.
November 11th?
Yes.
That's great, yes, I think it'll help promote that. Yeah, because the city used to do the Patriots Parade, I'd love to see that come back, or maybe after this year. We plan on supporting and being there. And, good deal. Well, I don't have any reports. Department of County Sheriff's Department, anything for us that we might need to know about? Any reports, everything going okay?
Good, I will pass on, and I can, I'll pass it on again at the, the council meeting in September, but October 3rd is National Night Out. I know Susan Shido's been doing a lot of legwork to get a lot of different businesses and organizations and things light up at the city park. So it'll be Tuesday, October 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, and she's, she's really going way out to get a, get a lot of different vendors and businesses and that, support that, so. We'll be, be cooking hamburgers, hot dogs, and of course, the city supports that and then, and provides funds for, for that. We'll all be out there serving, so yeah, I'm looking forward to it, so. We, last year we did it, it was just a few days after the, the brush with the hurricane, so it, you know, kind of, I think, affected a lot of that, and so, but hoping, hoping for a good turnout, a good time this year, so.
Thank you, that, it's a.
What's that?
What time?
Uh, 6:00 to 8:00, yeah.
In the same location, at the C5 field where it was last year?
Yes, sir, uh-huh, yes.
Okay, looking forward to that, thank you, Commander Cut, appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to say congratulations to Public Works. After the hurricane or tropical storm, whatever you want to call it, came through, we did have a lot of brush, and I noticed that Public Works was right out there. I left St. Vincent de Paul about 12:30, and I saw many Public Works employees picking up. And then from there, I went to Mahjong in Cocoa Beach, and all that brush and palm fronds were all over the streets, and I didn't see anybody picking that up in Cocoa Beach, so congratulations to Public Works. I also have to say that I did go to the Florida League of Cities Annual Meeting, Kim and I both went, and I went to many different meetings, and again, I think that it's important. This time, I'm not going to do transportation and intergovernmental affairs, but I am going to be on land use and economic development this year for a policy committee. And I hope to learn, I have a few more months left, so I figured I can learn more about what we can do in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With nothing else, you want to, you need to make a comment?
Just one more event, it's, this Cape Canaveral sponsoring.
Oh, yeah, we know that, September, the end of the month, the 28th or 29th.
September 30th? Thank you very much. That's great. Well, it is 7:10 PM, if there's not anything else, we okay to adjourn?
Yep.
All right, meeting adjourned.